Good evening, everyone. The Look Here Community School Board of Education meeting is now called to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance, but I will hand it over to you, Ms. McHenry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to introduce the Principal of Stricker Elementary, who is representing the school tonight. This is Michelle McHenry. We're going to introduce our students, who are going to be leading us in the pledge.
Don't be shy, I promise I won't let anybody get to you. I don't know.
We can't jump over the table.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we have the presented school.
Yes, so I'll reintroduce this Michelle McHenry, our esteemed principal. And she will introduce the staff joining her with us this evening to present on Board Goal 31A.
Yes, yes, sir. This is Amy Dunkey, our learning coach. And Michelle, thanks for having us. So we chose this board goal, 100% of teachers will contribute to a special learning community. We call that PLC. And focus on these four questions. What do we want students to learn? How are we going to assess them? What are we going to do if they aren't learning? And what will we do if they already know what we're teaching them? We chose this because we know that collective advocacy and working together is one of the best ways to increase student achievement, which is our ultimate goal, right? And just to give you some context of our building, we have about 487 students. 28% is special education. We house two self-contained DI programs and have over 50 staff members. We are lucky this year to have a mental health therapist, social worker. We share the behavior specialists amongst all of our schools. And we even regularly have some interventionists. So that helps support our school mentally. So we wanted to improve our PLCs, wanted them to be more effective. And looking at our data from last year, we were like, ooh, math seems to be a area we really need to work on. So how are we going to do this? Right now, we have PLC for reading and we have, you know, our data data for math. But we wanted to look at our math. So we thought, okay, let's have some PLCs for math. And that's where we started math data days. We wanted to give teachers time to really look at the standards and look and look for trends, any gaps, any areas where students really need to work on. And so this gave us time for myself, the coaches, our interventionists, and the grade levels to meet and really dig into those pieces. And so we were able to figure out our next steps. And then one of the things we loved was we were able to have, one of our interventionists focused solely on math. She went to math recovery as a training. So then she was able to really hit those students who were really struggling with their math stuff. And then while we were digging into the data during the math data days, we noticed across the board K5, our students struggled with problem solving. They couldn't persevere and quit on a story problem with math. And they couldn't solve multi-step problems. They could do, you know, I ate four apples and Johnny eight three, how many total? But they couldn't do if you gave them more than one step to do. So we thought, we got to fix this. So we were looking at researching different ways we could do this. And thankfully, the math we're piloting right now in VISION has not only the core curriculum, but additional resources. And one of them was called Today's Challenge. And Amy's going to talk more about that. But it is really in-depth and helps teachers teach problem solving. And it was for K5, it was perfect. It's a perfect setup, match me in the head. So I'll let Amy go ahead and talk. So I'm going to talk to you through what that's all about. And I did distribute before you got here some of the materials. So you can take a look at the sample third grade for one of our problems of the month. So this will show you the teacher guide. And the other copies are just copies of the actual student question loads there, for example. So if something, if you're wondering about something that I'm talking about, you can refer to that. So Michelle said this resources have provided K5 teachers with the support to teach really in-depth problem solving in a way that we could all talk around from our youngest to our oldest mathematicians. So it also gave us a common language to talk about with staff and during our staff meetings and things like that, that we could, allowed us to work toward the common goal. So once a month, the teachers in K5 were supplied with a topic. And each topic had a set of five word problems. The problems increased in difficulty within that topic, but it used the same set of data. Grade levels collaborated and they selected one problem each month and then one to assess afterwards. Each month's topic reinforced problem solving strategies and skills that used previously taught us. This provided, and this is my favorite part, it provided us some very intentional, the school-wide opportunities to practice those things that we discussed during those data days that we all really needed. K5 teachers saw this plan of the students really needing the support and making sense of problems, but also like persevering and solving them. They were just sort of giving up, it felt like. And it was a common thread in all of our K5 dashings. All right, what slide? There we go. So this is the problem solving recording sheet that all of the grades were given to support the development of thinking habits in students. And these are the things that we are really trying to grow. We were trying to get, we were trying to support the children in their understanding of what do I need to find out in this problem? What do I need to know? What's my plan? And what else can I try if I get stuck? And that often was a place where they would just sort of think, oh, so thinking of, you know, what's next? I got stuck, now what do I do? So wrapping that up with, how can I check to see that it makes sense, that my answer makes sense? The teachers use their teacher's guide, which you have a copy of, and they taught the day one. And then they assess the next day with the next consecutive day's question. Each opportunity every month, this gave our students practice making sense of problems. And it gave them intentional time to practice persevering toward a solution. The results were one of the things they brought to their PLC to discuss. And they discussed in those weeks, what do we want our students to learn? How are we going to assess what they know? And then what are we going to do if they aren't learning? And finally, what will they do if they already know what we're teaching? So they came back to that, not that they're looking back to it, because we did this, called it the problem of the muscle, month at a time. The month, the problem of the month provided the fuel to keep that momentum going and provided an opportunity for our building to engage in meaningful math collaboration year-round. At one staff meeting, teachers were given multiple student self-assessments. They could be used for math. This is one of the assessments that our third grade teacher, Ms. Morris, chose for her third grade students. Self-assessments can be very powerful in that they help students reflect math strengths and weaknesses and areas to improve. This formative feedback helped the teachers and students get to their learning target. Third grade teachers analyzed the results of the PLC and wanted to share that with you. This is one more second.
Sometimes I don't know if I can be careful.
When I make a mistake, I can do it a second time.
Yeah.
I need to get my thinking on, I need to look closer at what I did.
Yeah.
Did this survey how the kids felt about solving the problems. So my kids did it. And then when I did my final, when I analyzed the results, it was so cool. That our kids think it's okay to make mistakes. That was our strong. They think, no, it's okay. Where we need to learn is to have them explain how they did it. This is what they think, not what I did, what they think, which I agree with. And they also struggled with coming up with a plan and explaining. They all thought, just thought, everyone thought they could solve the problem. Which is really, that's what made it positive, no. So then when we went through the, when they started talking about individual on the other side, they had to talk about what they do well and where they need to grow. And a couple of them were very insightful. They all thought they could do the math. But again, they had like here, you'll have sign multiplication. And one little girl said, I can do the math, I just can't beat the problem. And so many of them thought vocabulary, vocabulary, vocabulary. You think, we keep hitting on that. But I think with us having that goal on the wall to keep that math target for problem solving on the forefront, and it's made progress in the world.
So that was just one example of, and we really liked the self-assessments. And the teachers hadn't used them yet. So that was really eye-opening for them. And for me, just a couple of those kids, you wouldn't think they would actually say stuff like that. I mean, you could get my head on straight with that, so. So our next steps, oh yeah, yes. We definitely want to continue having math data days. We thought it was really beneficial to the teachers. But we really want to work on refining it because it was new. We want to streamline it a little bit more. Continue to provide that structured time for teachers to collaborate. And then we want to continue to focus on formative assessment. Because, you know, you get reflective once you're looking at the different assessments to do better and get student achievement. That is our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
I remember story problems back when I was, I don't know why, how, but I'd ask my dad, who never finished high school really, you know, got his GED years later. I'd be like, Dad, I can't figure this out. He'd look at it, read it, and go, oh yeah, the answer's A. You're like, how, why? He didn't know. He understood it, he could read it, and it made sense here, but he couldn't put it on paper. And like, that's what the teachers need. I can get the answer right, but they need me to show how I figured it out, you know? And yeah, I mean, story problems and stuff, I just, I still remember that. So yeah, they are fun, they're goodies, so.
I love the use of self-assessments. I mean, because that's going to be used forever, right? Hopefully, right? In their DNA, that's awesome. And I really like how now they're teaching them to develop their math plan instead of just getting the answer.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's really, that's really it. They're dealing with math all they want. They just don't really have that peer connection.
And it helps that higher level thing too, you know?
What's interesting is I teach accounting and story problems, I mean, everything, story problems and math. And I expose, so.
Story and whole pages, man.
That's all I know. But vocab, but when the teachers said vocabulary, like lit up, you know, like that was like, that's what I think.
Yeah.
But in reality, it's different, you know? So I appreciate it. So you hate the math and you hate doing accounting. Hopefully.
Yeah, but how, how little did you have third grade thinking about your own math? Like, you never did. It was just, it was all about getting the right answer.
Right. So that vocabulary, it's obviously, well, that's accounting here, and it's a different vocabulary. That should come along.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
That was good. Thank you.
Math is not words, we need to keep it that way.
That was editorial content.
You know, yeah. I don't think that's what you're doing here as a doctor.
No, no, sorry. Connections, everything is going to work.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it. Okay, I don't have any public comment here this evening. So we will move into our presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So Erica Ingles, in our business department, along with Ms. Raider and myself, will be presenting updated budget. This is, this is, this is the season. Updated number two budget development presentation. Erica will share with people kind of the timeline, where we're at in our process, and what to expect when we're here. So Erica, what is yours?
So we'll leave this, you know, kind of open dialogue, so if you just chime in if you've got questions or comments or whatnot.
So everything is great you're going to share?
Everything is good news.
No sense. Everything is awesome.
Okay.
All right, so you guys have seen this slide as the first budget presentation. So I'm not going to go over, you know, what happened from January to April. But today, we are here, obviously, May. We have a budget manager meeting coming up. That's next week. We actually are digging in and preparing a final adopt, or final amendment today for June's board. So we'll have a final in June, and then we'll adopt the 26th budget. So we'll see that in June. And then we'll hold a public hearing on the public's budget. So after this, it will become final, and it will change the next day. Okay. So kind of where we are, and revenue is at a federal level and state level. Obviously, we're starting to see a little bit of slowing. Economy's starting to demonstrate some uncertainty, you're saying it with, you know, trade wars, tariffs, you know, the economy and poll. For Michigan, and how it relates, is I'll use an acronym, it's SAS. So SAS is, for anyone new, School Aid Fund. So revenue's projected to be about $432 million above this year, which is, we all say, yay, great news! But it's still lagging. Revenue's lagging. Tax revenue is about $212.8 million below projections that the state has done on a year-to-date basis. And obviously, staying about $66.1 below projections for the School Aid Fund. So obviously, you're seeing that different revenues that were once projected that are not quite there. So Wednesday, so Friday, we will have the Revenue Consensus Conference on, in May, on May 16. So we'll be seeing a little bit better, see where revenues are landing. Like I said, they've already given us kind of a, not skies falling, but, you know, revenues are tightening. So again, we'll see, we've got state economists down there, kind of get the overall economy picture from a state level, and how that affects at a local level. They won't say, hey, Look Here, you're doing, you know, your revenue is X or whatever. But, you know, take it and digest it as what it means as a local impact. They've already, they've already put it out there, that final budget by June 30th at the legislature is not likely. Which is really unfortunate, you know, we have to have our budget set by June 30th. But we won't see probably anywhere close to a budget for June 30th. They were setting middle lead, kind of that September outlook, you know, that timeframe. So like I said, we're hoping. She surprised us last year and signed at what mark? Like June 29th or something? But obviously, way too late for us to adopt a budget. There's a lot of shift in Lansing. Priorities at the legislature, different branches wanting. She's mentioned road funding's a priority of hers. So again, stealing Peter to pay Paul, House wants this, Senate wants this, she wants this. So it's going to be an uphill battle to see that final budget. This, this graph is no surprise to us. I think it's been in all of our presentations, but it just shows, we did a enrollment projection this past fall. We are currently about 4,100 kids. We were expecting to see kind of a level of. When we ran the enrollment projections, we're not seeing that. So most likely is in green. Splendid is in red. And yellow is in low. We usually generally hover between that most likely and splendid projection. I guess we're at 4,121 right now. Hoping, hoping for, you know, more students, but, you know, also, you know, kind of planning for the worst. Okay, so this is a big slide. So budget variables. So kind of, we're going to go over like what changes in local economy, district level, that all plays a factor in our budget. So as a declining enrollment district, the financial impacts of the foundational allowance has impacted. So, you know, we might see, I think we're seeing right now about $400 foundational allowance, which is great, but as a declining enrollment district, I guess it helps even us out. So we're not starting to get a worse. We're taking, we're going to start taking a look at some structural changes to offset the increased costs in the short run to sustain fund equity. Looking at kind of a district short-term and long-term strategic plan. That might be re-like utilization of district-owned property, you know, kind of what that, what that may look like. We've got some kind of vacant buildings already that, you know, made fields sit empty. You know, what does that look like? Do we sell it? Do we revitalize it? You know, so kind of taking the long-term, or look at that long-term strategic plan and in the short term.
And it's also important to remember, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely.
That as we, you know, what we've done in the last 15 years to close buildings, the initial plan was always, let's build onto that building, let's see where things shake out from a student enrollment perspective or student programming perspective. Might those properties or buildings play into programming initiatives? Need, never be, want to sell something and close a program and sell the building next year. So now that we've, we're beginning to get a clearer forecast of where things may level up from enrollment perspective, and also where we sit from a student programming perspective, we think we've got a more solid approach to taking a look at some of the district-owned properties. Some of those are vacant, some of them are currently utilized, some of them are rented to other agencies locally. So we've got to take a look at how those buildings and properties can fit into our overall vision plan. Can they be assets that help sense in these budgetary processes?
The next bullet, reduction of fund ballots. So, you know, two years ago, we kind of took a district approach that we would sell, you know, the seven contracts. By one year or two the next, was some significant staffing increases in cost to kind of help level the playing field so that, and you know, going into that, we knew we were going to take from fund ballots. We're seeing a little bit more of a reduction, as you'll see in the next few slides. But, you know, that, that certainly plays a, you know, an impact. And again, here we are, two years later, five open contracts, two open contracts next year. So staffing impact, you know, we're going to, you know, obviously, it's out of the picture that we'll look at potential reductions. Obviously, that just goes in play when you're losing students from year to year. You should be, you know, reducing your staff. So salary and benefit costs. I thought this was a good, kind of good takeaway. It kind of puts it in perspective, like, you know, I'm in it daily, and it kind of was like, oh yeah, so listening to this, a dollar in wage. So you just take, you know, your top-end scale teacher, $90,000. It's like, oh, you can afford that, it's $90,000, that's all you're paying. Well, what people don't realize is of that dollar, 45 cents of it goes to fight up Medicare, and it goes into paying the retirement system. So you pay a dollar, the district pays 45 cents. So really, you know, your $100,000 teacher, you also have to budget $45,000 for fight up retirement and all those kind of benefits. So really, that teacher is now a $150,000 teacher. So just good information for you guys to kind of arm yourselves with. School aid funding to community colleges and universities, this is always kind of a hot topic. We might see a little bit of movement, a little bit of traction in here. We actually went to a conference in Grand Rapids about two weeks, two weeks ago. In 2010, Michigan has shifted a total of $10 billion of its School Aid Fund to community colleges and universities. So based on current enrollment statewide, that is a cumulative shift of about $7,200 per pupil out of the School Aid Fund K12 in the last 16 years. So you take that out, and you could have had an increase in your per pupil allowance of $7,200. A total of $5.26 billion in School Aid Fund has been appropriated to community colleges since 2009 and 10, and $4.68 billion to public universities since 2001 to 2012. So the reason why I bring that up is there is a House bill in Lansing that would amend Michigan's constitution to ban the use of School Aid Fund dollars to fund universities' operating budgets. So you take a look at a university, they can raise tuition and cost to help offset their costs, and they're getting money from the School Aid Fund. So they're, it's like they're double dipping, where we can't raise, we can't raise the price for our kids. You know, we get our $10,000 pupil out, that's all we have. So there is a House bill out there that kind of bans that, that movement and that shift of funds. Has to pass the House and Senate first by two-thirds majority. If it passes the House, it then moves to the election ballot for the general election in November of '26. So then it'll be a public vote come 2026 to kind of stop that. So we'll see where that, where that, you know, where that, we'll kind of watch where that lands.
Do you have, do you have to have that House bill percent of the number?
I don't, but I can give that for you, yes. Okay, so and then, we're all, like I said, you know, the economy's, you know, fluctuating, watching potential federal funding. We've heard, I've heard rumblings of potential cuts to Medicaid. Gen, you know, in the first special, at IDEA funds. The Title I Fund, Michelle's Title I. E-Rate Technology, and then School Meals. So School Meals is kind of a, you know, right now, everyone eats for free. So does the Fed, you know, cut it? Do they say, no, we'll cut it, but we'll move it to a different branch, you know, US Ag or whatever? So, you know, just because they're saying, oh, cut it, doesn't mean we're cutting it completely. It just means kind of maybe a shift in, but I'm not sure. Watch the notes and see where those lay. And then, final, budgetary pressures, obviously, number one inflation. Inflation's continuing to rise. Guess that are seven, five open contracts this year to next year. You know, Kim and I are sitting in bargaining right now, and, you know, the kind of the tone is, well, you know, they kind of expect that, you know, increase in wages that they got, you know, two years ago at the bargaining table. So just kind of explaining, educating them that, yes, we're very fortunate to get those raises this is the last time. However, we as a district would love to sustain those increases, but, you know, current economic times just doesn't, doesn't support that. Minimum wage, I'm sure you've all heard of minimum wage. Currently projected $15 an hour in 2028. So obviously, that will have, you know, pretty substantial hit to the budget with our support groups. You know, food service, custodial staff, some are, you know, parent support staff, kind of watching that. That's all over the board, except $15, and they were extended, and said, well, maybe we don't, we'll do that. So we'll leave that, we'll leave that in Lansing for them to deal with. And then at the conference too, we've also heard of a pretty significant rise in utility rates. Upwards to go, double. So that's, that's a little scary. You know, the cost to run a building is going to double, you know, within the next year or two. So we have to really start watching and kind of talk to a couple of vendors at the conferences that, you know, we can look at some different energy programs that we need to get ourselves, you know, looking at, that's a little bit alarming. Questions? Okay. So here is the 25, 26, like I said, proposed projections. So it does not mean we're getting 392, 400, and 417. As you recall, last year, we kind of presented the same thing, and we got zero. So just keep, keep that in the back of your head. I don't think we will see that this year. I think the governor kind of got her hand slapped on that one, and Lansing's about, can't do that again. And not to say that we didn't get any increase. It was just a movement and shipment of, hey, we're going to give you a $0 pupil increase, but we're going to supplement it and reduce your, your retirement. And we're going to give you a little bit of money in the amount of health, but we're going to steal from this size. So a lot of shift, shifting. And depending on your pupil enrollment, districts, you know, got all, you know, different counts. So if you were a larger district, you would receive more than you So if you were a larger district, you would receive more than if you got a smaller district. So it wasn't apples to apples across the board where your pupil allowance, you know, kind of, you know, take it for MIPs for instance, if that's your retirement. So you've got, let's take a Troy where you've got higher wage and salary cost. Well, you're gonna see more of a benefit, you know, for your retirement reduction where you take a smaller district that both have those, you know, substantial labor costs and, you know, they might have suffered a little bit more. So it wasn't like an equal playing field where the per pupil um increases more. Everyone gets this, it's just driving off of your FTE or your foundation. So the governor is proposing three ninety-two, Senate's proposing four hundred and House is proposing four seventeen. So based on a projected fall FTE, we are uh projecting down a hundred students, about four thousand thirty-three. We're at about forty-one thirty-three right now in FTE. So that means new dollars about one point five, one point six and one point six for the House. Which is all great, but now we have to factor into our student loss. So if we take a hundred FTE at our per pupil foundation rate, ten thousand dollars, we have to start out the gate next year's, next school year, a million dollar loss. So you take that out and our new net dollars per governor and House, we're sitting about half a million.
Are all districts in Michigan experiencing this decrease in student? Or like our county or, I, some of these areas, I wonder if we're really seeing an increase.
Yeah.
The, the general statement is about two thirds, about two thirds of the districts.
But like in your city, like McComb, Oakland, those are probably not as much?
In areas that still have residential growth, yes, so South Lyon, I'm familiar with, still lots of vacant. That district has grown by, it's about.
Experience report um of the twenty eighth, twenty eighth, so it's, yeah, twenty eighth, there was, I think, three that had experienced at that moment, a ten year period, yeah, so net, net loss.
So that's bringing the increase, so if there's a decrease across the state, in my, my, my county area, am I correct, right? Um, that means that there's more in money in the student school aid fund, so that's bringing the larger increases. However, what you're saying is they're dipping into the fact that we're declining enrollment, not giving it back to the districts in that fund, right?
Yes.
Because if you got less students, right, you did more, I mean, the same amount of money, you're gonna get more money for people.
That has been the phenomenon for the last decade. That's why when I presented before, you're right Lisa, that with losing six to eight before COVID, it was close to ten to twelve thousand students statewide, that helps the funding.
Right, because the revenue.
About fifty million a year, fifty, sixty million a year.
Revenue's not gonna change it, right? That's what I'm saying, if the revenue's staying the same, you're dividing it by less students.
Right.
You should get substantial increase.
And that's why we've seen those kind of increases last prior three years along with COVID dollars because of those drops. And we had forty-two thousand student count drop statewide for COVID and they never came back. There's somewhere, but no one's ever figured out where, but that freed up a lot of money in those years to, to give foundation allowance increases. That you're right.
Okay. We're actually, I was actually kind of surprised to see these per pupil increases just where, you know, revenues are lagging right now on school aid fund is, is healthy, but it's definitely, you know, dragging a little bit, so I was kind of surprised to see.
This is not a bad increase.
No.
If you didn't have the declining enrollment.
Right, yeah.
Right, I mean, it really isn't, we haven't, we didn't see more numbers.
No. No, I mean, we saw what, two hundred-ish last year, so to see four hundred, it's like, okay, well.
Yeah, you just need to come in and go, okay, but you're getting a hundred less kids, let's up that.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's also.
Say something about that then.
Um, and then I found it interesting, the House, um, obviously at the, you know, the governor and Senate both proposed, um, the House cut about five billion out of the school aid fund. So not sure right now if it's a temporary like cut or is it, again, is that politics of, hey, we're gonna leave five hundred, or five billion unfunded? You know, we'll start to play with, hey, you want this, you want this? So I don't believe the House is fully, the full proposal out there, but they're saying, hey, you know, five billion is not appropriated in that House proposal.
John, I found it's a House Joint Resolution H, proposed by Central Appropriations, sponsored by Rob Kelly on March twentieth of this year. Thank you. Joint Resolution proposed an amendment to the state constitution by amending section four of Article Eight and section two of Article Nine to update the enumeration of public universities and to prohibit the use of state's school aid fund for any operating expenses of public universities. House President, Joint Resolution H.
And, and it was brought up kind of at the conference, um, you know, why isn't the MEA and all these groups supporting and, you know, kind of cheerleader behind this, you know, it's their, it's their group. And what I didn't know, and it's for you guys to be aware, um, the MEA is not just K twelve. The MEA does have university and community college members, so and.
Typically, those members make more in salary.
Yep, so they're kind of gotta be a little higher.
On the funding.
Yep.
From those institutions.
Yeah, so it's gotta be a little bit. They're not, they're not going, yay, 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 let's go, let's go.
The problem I see is that the money has to come from somewhere, right? They're, they're wanting to do all these, you know, Michigan, you can have, you can get students into two years of community college. So I, I, I worry that this will just push it to, okay, then we're gonna redo the funding system, right? And, and we'll just, we'll fix it that way, like.
Yeah.
I, I just wonder how successful they'll really be if, you know, they, they gotta have the money from somewhere, I don't think.
Yeah.
Well, at, at some point, however, I don't disagree, but colleges and universities need to start making the same painful decisions K twelves have made. You're getting fewer students, I don't see any colleges closing around Michigan. I, I don't see that happening, I don't see them downsizing, I see their costs going up exponentially from an operation perspective.
And the buildings are not being utilized.
Buildings are not being utilized, so we're paying for the infrastructure, maintaining all these buildings and one eight campuses. Meanwhile, they've got millions and billions in endowment funds, right? That they're not tapping for operational costs, for funding, research and that's, I'm not discounting the importance of that. However, you've got, you've got organizations like ours who have to run more in line with private sector reflections of economic um factors that are impacting us. And that means rightsizing, downsizing, um, it means trying to attract new revenue models. It means um reducing employees, reducing staff, reducing operational costs. Things that private businesses have to do when the economy fluctuates, uh, and we've been responsive, at least locally, in doing that. However, there is, there gets a point of diminishing returns on all of these, these cuts. So it's disheartening to see billions of dollars, and let's not forget the genesis of the school aid fund. The creation of it was following Proposal A, which did fundamentally alter the funding structure of how those schools are funded. I'm not here to wax a little sophomoric on whether Proposal A was ninety-four, part of ninety-five and whether that was the right thing to do for the state. But the school aid fund was set aside exclusively as a funding source that schools could then uh count on. And the idea was, which I, I fundamentally agree with, is that in order to level the playing field, that if you live in an affluent area and local property taxes are funding this grand school system and right next door, it didn't have a property tax base and so kids were getting a disparate um service, disparate um education based on their zip code. Uh, so we have really looked at, you know, kind of the haves versus the have-nots, it's really leveled out.
It's nice to see the whole karma of school, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
Yeah, for sure, it is, but okay, now that the school aid fund is healthy on an annual basis compared to the general fund, it's getting raided, right? It's five billion dollar cut just as an accounting adjustment, okay, that's great. Uh, community colleges and universities taking billions off the top. Um, and listen, I don't want, I, I, I know this board and this is not a give us more money and leave us alone kind of an organization. We, we, we do our golf fighting and we want to be responsible with the use of taxpayer dollars. Certainly, it's not, it's not give us a blank check and don't hold us accountable, that's not the case. However, at some point, you do have to identify some of these variables as difficult challenges to overcome. That, that is an excuse, but this is why we call them variables.
Okay, so this chart again is no surprise, you guys saw this in the first presentation, shows our fund balance history. Um, and along with, you know, the peers, you know, our board goal and our state average. The chart on the right is new. What this reflects is with and without COVID funding. So the chart on the left, obviously you can see our fund balance at twenty twenty-four, sixteen and a half percent. That all includes the influx of COVID spending, one-time categoricals, S R dollars. We got some transportation, nice chunk of transportation costs in there. Um, a pretty significant increase in categoricals for thirty-one A, education or compensation. So all these extra dollars, um, kind of that came out of COVID. And you could see, um, you know, back in twenty twenty where you go from eleven to fourteen percent, you can kind of see that shift, obviously twenty-two was a dip and it was kind of more of an accounting adjustment on our end. But, you know, you can see that, that one time, that influx of dollars. Chart on the right is, okay, everything I just said, pull it out. So pull out all your, your five bill, your five million dollars, six million dollar in S R funds, just one S R. We have about ten million dollars in S R funds um since twenty twenty, actually probably more closer to eleven. Um, and just S R itself, you know, we got a, you know, a couple million dollars in all these one-time categoricals. And you can clearly see that, you know, you remove that, look at twenty twenty-four. You know, you're down to where our board has had an average of, you know, that ten, eleven, you know, eight percent. So I think this is a really powerful chart that says, yeah, we can, you know, we are saying, sure, we are sitting at sixteen and a half. But that is driven by S R and it is driven by COVID.
And I think also important, well, now that we showed the four or five school years prior, we were hovering around three, three and a half percent, um, that we had a nice incremental kind of organic growth that we did. And a lot of that was a result of the high school merger, um, the closing of elementary schools, the reduction of staff, the reduction of operational costs, and we're able to kind of squirrel some money away. And also, not to be disingenuous in our presentation of this, we did get some uh good school aid funding allowance increases and that type of stuff. So it's not, not to say that we just did great accounting and great management, you know, hey, we're awesome. But you do see vast difference between, I look at two thousand twenty-one sitting almost fifteen percent or without that federal influx of money, it'd be closer to ten, so which would have been a more natural representation. So what we're gonna present to you, where we end up in fiscal year twenty-five with the finalized budget may seem like a uh, a significant drop from sixteen and a half percent, but the more real number, to be quite frank, is closer to eleven.
And, and, you know, when we, you know, started discussing this fund balance, I mean, to point out, yeah, we're at twelve percent, but, you know, we, we, four years ago, we'd have, we'd have the same conversation. So COVID just saved us and delayed us four years.
And again, that is not editorial comment on the federal government's use of funds. It is not, I mean, you know, we're, we're not here to, we, we, we don't have the luxury of saying how the funding comes in. Uh, we are at the end of the line in terms of decision-making process. So I know there's all kinds of debate about, you know, waste fraud and abuse of COVID dollars and the private sector, there are a lot of commentary on that. Um, we, I, Mark and Erica, you can speak just better than I can, but the amount of regulation and reporting that we had to do to prove legitimacy of our, our utility of that money was a lot, a lot. So I, I am more than confident as the head of the organization to say that our people did an absolutely fine job and they didn't have much of a choice. Frankly, you've demonstrated proof of how the money was being spent, uh, worked for legitimate purposes.
Not only what we were gonna spend it on, but did we actually spend it on it then? Yeah. And also both then.
Correct.
And you're audited on that. I mean, the state comes in, Jenny or Michelle knows this, you know, Jenny and I worked with, you know, the state, they come in, they first look at your budget, they look from the financial standpoint and they look from the education and Michelle's role to make sure, yeah, your expenses match to what, you know, your curriculum goals are. And then, you know, you spend some time, then it comes back and you're still audited through the state and we're audited separately from Plan Moran. So Plan Moran takes a whole look at our audit and they audit all of our COVID funding, but separate from them is the state. So we kind of got two, two audits running at the simultaneously for all these, these COVID dollars, so rest assured, it's the past. Okay, so financial forecast, so kind of here we are today. The blue column represents twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four actual, so where we ended the audit last year and that ten point three million dollar fund out, sixteen point five percent. If we kind of, obviously if you adopted the original budget, um, kind of where we thought things would land. Um, that's kind of why, you know, it's the original budget, like I said, it'll change the very next day. Um, so, you know, I wouldn't really use that orange twenty-four, twenty-five, it's kind of just our guide from the accounting, you know, perspective. But, you know, we take a look at that twenty twenty-four, twenty-five final budget, um, and actually diving in deeper. This is actually done like February, March, I think, um, kind of deeper, I've been diving today. You know, we're, we're looking at about a five million dollar deficit this year, dropping that fund balance onto about five point two million. Again, though, back in line with, you know, prior, prior years' fund balance history at like that eighty percent, so. That's kind of where I'm expecting, you know, seven, eight, nine percent, maybe more. So kind of see where things shake out in a matter of a while.
And so all the changes that we propose um for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, all the conversations we have in relation to budget managers, staffing, contract negotiation, operations, program evaluation are all in the backdrop of this, this present situation, right? Whether you can look at that list of variables and say, well, you know, they're doing the best they can, it's still a five million dollar cut. Right, still a five million dollar deficit. And so that requires us to reengage in an organization-wide evaluation of all the things I just mentioned from a reduction perspective. And that is work that we've been doing in my entire tenure here, save the more COVID fiscal years where we just get some artificial injection of funds that delayed the pain, so to speak, of engaging in that work. But we're very confident in our ability to do that. We've demonstrated, we've got over a fifteen year history of doing that work with our employee groups to identify those necessary reductions. So that work begins in earnest today, really with the recognition, the public um recognition of our circumstance. Sky is not falling, but it certainly is an indicator that there are going to be some tough conversations on the horizon for the next two to three fiscal years. That's just a fact.
So key takeaways for tonight, um, obviously, we'll continue our educational presentations to the board and subcommittees. I guess I've got budget managers next week, um, so, you know, kind of keep, you know, just, doesn't end next week. You know, we'll just keep reengaging those subcommittees, obviously board, you know, some of these findings and ops, personnel, all those committees that are affected by some of those key decisions. Uh, because our communicating reductions are in May beginning next school year. So what we've eliminated, or what we've reduced already, we've reduced the secretary position, we've reduced a dean, building professional, um, and then five point six FTE teachers. So that has already taken place, will take place, you know, for next school year. Uh, we'll start ramping up the budget managers process, like Matt said, and we've already started work um on that for next week. And that kind of process begins now, actively engaging key stakeholders in the organization. So that's our principles, that's our unit leaders, our K twelve group, um, kind of pulling back out in some of the historical charts and graphs that we've shared with those groups, kind of re-engaging in those. Identify, identify areas of cost increases, but also decreases to recommend a balanced budget for you guys to approve. You know, I say increasing, everyone was like, you're increasing costs? Well, yeah, we talked about potential, uh, you know, utility costs. Inflation's not going anywhere in ten two, so, you know, you know, take a look at some of our contracts where they're recommending an increase on services. So, yeah, like, we're gonna have increased costs, so how do we kind of, you know, balance that out? Um, and then obviously scrutinizing expenditures beginning now. So I've also, like, we're, we're pretty tight on expenditures and, and everything is running through myself and Mark and kind of the whole team and, you know, we're, we're kind of definitely scrutinizing and more so needs and wants, you know, yeah, it's wonderful, we can provide that. But as a need and obviously classroom comes first, kind of, you know, not cut as much of the classroom, but. Kind of, you know, not cut as much at the classroom, but, so you'll probably hear a little bit more no's than yeses. No sugar, but it's just kind of a fact. So now, watch care plans, three ranges of government negotiated, priorities spending. As I said, we'll see if we see anything for June, but like I said, we've got to present to you next month anyway, so not waiting on that. But Friday, we'll have a big revenue conference, we're going to have revenue state estimates. Let's see, maybe little surprises in revenues are coming in, I don't know. Next Wednesday is budget managers number two. And then, like I said, the June fourth, we'll have a preliminary budget and a whole bit of final budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And then we will adopt the final budget for this year and the original budget for next year at the June twenty-four meeting. Any thoughts, questions?
Oh, sir.
Yeah.
We don't want to start that one. No, that'll break it down, but, you know, it's continuations every year of paying the open. We'll wait and see.
Yep, I mean, like I said last month, I mean, we're, I can stand up here and say, we don't know where revenues are. We don't know where revenues are. Like, finally, I feel like we're at a spot where I finally know, like, one month prior to the end of, you know, the school aid year, I finally know where my revenues are, but like, and it's been, you know, how you expect to operate, you know, in a full-size district versus small compared to some of these districts that are, you know, you just find out your final revenues. Like, so that's always a challenge, but you somehow figure it out. I mean, appreciate all the effort and work that goes into the budget. It's a lot, and it's by everybody, right? I mean, it's a lot to adjust. Seems, there is a lot of economical science to this budget process. And obviously, you can see the state, when we get in the federal, when we get our funding, really does not help in our process. So just understanding the history and having you guys continue that in your process here really helps us. Get as close as we can. Yep. Right? And we knew, we've known that we're gonna see some effects of post-COVID pressure funding that we received. We're gonna see that over the next couple of years. Yeah, and just to give you, like, the magnitude of our budget, you know, we have a sixty million dollar budget. Well, that's about, just so you guys are aware, that's about fifteen hundred line items that we go through, actually, I'm going through right now. One percent of them are done, like, almost done. Fifteen hundred line items that we're having to scrutinize and look at, and, you know, what is, what is trends? Like, am I gonna have this next year? Can I cut this? Like, so, I mean, it's a sizable budget, like. You know, when we present it to you, it's like, oh, it's like ten line items, like, no, maybe. But that detail is like...
We like the statistics part, yeah.
But that detail, I mean, it's a pretty, I'm a budget that is... Just one thing is, I do think we scrutinize expenditures all the time. I don't want people to think we're just doing it now. Agree. We do do it all the time. Obviously, during our COVID years with the excess dollars, we had more room to be able to do the things that we needed to do in our district that we haven't had the funding to do. So we appreciated those extra dollars that make those things happen, but we're very much always scrutinizing, actually. Any other question?
I got one added bullet point. So you've heard me for years say this. It's not part of this slide. What year are we in? Twenty-twenty-five. Remember the chart for retirement? Full funding of our retirement system was supposed to occur by twenty-thirty-five. It's now kicked the can for the last two cycles of budgeting to twenty-thirty-nine, okay? There's gonna be four billion, that's with a B, dollars that are freed up in the School Aid debt when that's fully funded in twenty-thirty-nine. Don't think for a minute that the politics of the world aren't trying to get their fingers on that pot before. Because that's why the higher ed, not to pick Lisa, because we know the sensitivity, and there's got to be a balance, right, as we said earlier. But they're trying to pull money out because they know at some point that's going to come in the schools. That's why we had the statement, twenty-eight billion dollars worth of infrastructure is needed to bring the schools just brick and mortar up to what today's standards are. No one has the ability to pass bonds in the state to that level. And so will some of that money get earmarked for that? Probably, as we start marching. So things are gonna change from what we've seen historically. There will be some better times coming, but there's gonna be a fight for that pot of money. Because as that starts to free up, we're gonna start seeing some real arm wrestling for funds. Because, as Matt stated, the General Fund is not seeing the same influx of revenue. Part of that's because of the earmark of sixty percent of sales tax and other revenue streams out there to the School Aid Fund. At least there was, the forefathers thirty years ago with Prop eight, getting some solid funding mechanisms. But we're on the cusp of changed society-wise, right? And I say these things because we know it's gonna happen. We don't know when. We're gonna move from fossil fuels to electricity. Listen, we get a sizable portion of revenue off of the sales tax, off of the gas pump. When that goes away, it has to be replaced. You've seen major fighting in the legislature as to what's that replacement? Is it assessment on our registrations? Is it everyone's gonna pay for electricity? Who knows what it'll be, right? That's right. The sky's not falling, but it's changing. And what we're trying to guess somewhere is, where do we fall so we can keep the ship going in the right direction, right? And that's gonna be the challenge in the next decade for us.
But I also think in regards, though, you're gonna have to deal with the fact that you don't have the benefit system that we've had in the past to force people to come into teaching.
That's what our retention is struggling with.
Exactly. So there's gonna have to be some dollars put into becoming a teacher.
We're gonna have to change some of that infrastructure.
It's gonna have to be addressed, right? I mean, that's true. You can look at this, but you can tell in mind.
Right.
But when now you commit and fifty percent of your salary is going to benefits and everything else, right? I mean, that's, people are not going to be teachers anymore. I mean, people, I hear it all the time. Don't see, I mean, it's not me, I'm wrong, but I hear it all the time, so.
Okay, let's head into our reports this evening. We have the Finance and Operations Committee. Dr. Watson, would you please share some more?
Oh, we got a whole report.
Thank you.
The Finance and Analysis Committee met on May ninth at one o'clock via Zoom. Members, committee members present, myself, Summer Plutnem, Lisa Novak, no one missing. Others attending, Mark Rader, Erica Ingalls, Kim Seifertley, Brian Batter, Joe Wood, Julia Peruski from Barton Mallow, and Mary Moss. We called order one, and we discussed the LHS asbestos abatement. Joe Wood reviewed the asbestos abatement bid from Nova Environmental Eight for asbestos removal at LHS in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Materials to be removed include, but are not limited to flooring, doors and frames, window units, and other miscellaneous materials. Due us the consensus of the committee that the board approved the bid from Nova Environmental Eight for asbestos removal at LHS at a cost not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The bid will be placed on the May fourteenth agenda for the board to consider approval. Bon change order number twenty-five, bid act number three, Tural additional ceiling replacement. Barton Mallow recommends the issuance of a change order to Clark Contracting Services for ceiling replacement at Tural Elementary in the amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. This change includes the installation of new ceiling grid and tile in seven classrooms and a girls' bathroom. The reason for this change is because the ceilings in these spaces are being abated, and new ceiling needs to be installed. Due us consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval for order number twenty-five tonight. Bargaining update, Kim Seifertley updated the committee on five open contracts with our bargaining units. These contracts will all expire on June thirty of twenty-twenty-five. Ask me, which is custodians, LEA teachers, LSDAA, building administrators, LTA, bus drivers, and the Peer Mechanics Association. In addition, Erica Ingalls reviewed the General Fund five-year budget projection with the committee. Food service management contract approval. As previously discussed, food services contracts must go out for red every five years, which we did in twenty-twenty, and we use them annually. Erica Ingalls explained that bids went out, and there were four vendor bids received. The Nutrition Group, Chartwells, Whitson's Culinary Group, and Southwest Food Service Excellence. After consideration, it is being recommended that Chartwells be awarded the contract for food services for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year with four one-year renewals. As provided under federal and state guidelines and regulations, the district has submitted all required documents to MDE and has received final approval by MDE to appear community schools. Due us consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval tonight, and we adjourned at two fourteen.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Dr. Watson. That concludes our reports this evening. We will have interaction items. So our first is consent agreement, approval of minutes of April nine, twenty-twenty-five. Second public hearing for budget for seven PM on June twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. And then overnight, out-of-state wheelchair request for a high school wrestling team to travel to Port Lauderdale, Florida on June twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five. Sorry, June twenty-second to the twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five. Are there any, I understand, which is anybody who wishes to remove that consent permit? Okay, I hear you none, so can I get a motion?
I make a motion that the reading of the minutes and policies be exempted, agenda items be approved as presented.
Second, eh?
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries. Okay, next we have resolution to adopt designation of a editorial representative for the June second, twenty-twenty-five LCISD biannual election. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that the ISD biannual election resolution be approved as presented, selecting Craig Watson as the representative for the board, and Tim Lookout as the alternate, and voting for Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Thank you. And Dr. Mr. Novak for the six-year term.
I'll support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson? Dr. Novak?
I can go, I can, right?
You can, you can.
Okay. Aye.
Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries. You can.
Okay.
Next is the ISD twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six general fund operating budget resolution.
I'll make a motion that the resolution supporting the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six ISD general fund operating budget be approved as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Novak? Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries. Okay, let's see. Now we have the K-four math textbook adoption.
I make a motion that the K-four math textbook division be approved as presented.
Support.
Motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries. Then we have seven twelve ELA textbook adoption.
I make a motion that the seven twelve ELA textbook, my perspectives, be approved as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries. Next is our food service contract renewal.
I make a motion that the food service contract, which will be renewed for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Support.
Motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries. Okay, next we have up here, high school asbestos abatement.
I make a motion that the asbestos abatement bid for LePierre High School be awarded to Nova Environmental Incorporated for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Support.
Motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries. Then we have change order number twenty-five, Tural additional ceiling replacement.
I'll make a motion that Clark Contracting Services be issued in amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents for ceiling replacement at Tural Elementary.
Support.
Okay, we have a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries. Okay, next we have closed session.
I make a motion that the board move to closed session to discuss the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven ELA master agreements. Support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Pottens says aye. Motion carries, and we will head into closed session.